What a great evening we're gonna have here together today. Celebrating kids and teachers and partnerships. We're very glad to have each of you here. We're gonna start our group tonight. This is Jenna Johnson. Jenna, will you come and introduce yourself and tell them who this great group is and we'll go from there. This is one of our wonderful choral teachers in our district. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. Thank you. This group that we have here today are 4th and 5th grade students in the Harp-Hawkes Honor Choir. And our honor choir is a group of auditioned students, so not everybody in the 4th and 5th grade, but some students who are in this advanced choir that we have.
You wanna introduce the special ladies?
This is our principal, Mrs. Strange.
I'm just gonna turn it over to them because you are in for a treat and there's no better way to spend the time with children than being in your own home. Awesome.
There's a bright golden haze on the meadow. There's a bright golden haze on the meadow. The corn is as high as an elephant's eye and it looks like it's climbing clear up to the sky. Oh, what a beautiful morning! Oh, what a beautiful day! I got a beautiful feeling, everything's going my way. All the sounds of the earth are like music. All the sounds of the earth are like music. The breeze is so busy it don't miss a tree and it all weeping willer is laughing at me. Oh, what a beautiful morning! Oh, what a beautiful day! I got a beautiful feeling, everything's going my way. Oh, what a beautiful day! When the swallows, when the swallows go winging in clouds of bright colors from far off. When the rainbow, when the rainbows spread movements of color all over the sky. And I know why the splendors of true love are great and their colors the best ones of all. And I know why the splendors of true love are great and their colors the best ones of all. In the magic star and the moon is the only light we'll see. No, I won't be afraid, no, I won't be afraid. Just as long as you stand, stand by me. So darling, darling, stand by me. Oh, stand by me. Oh, stand, stand by me, stand by me. Even the sky that we look upon should crumble and fall and the mountains should crumble to the sea. I won't cry, I won't cry, no, I won't shed a tear. Just as long as you stand, stand by me. So darling, darling, stand by me. Oh, stand by me. Oh, stand, stand by me, stand by me. So darling, darling, stand by me. Oh, stand by me. Oh, stand, stand by me, stand by me. So darling, darling, stand by me. Oh, stand by me. Oh, stand, stand by me, stand by me. When the hawks are flying, they're soaring to success. Working hard and learning to be their very best. They live their lives of character, they're proud and honest too. Each one sets the example, there's nothing they can do. So join us as we praise them and let these words ring. The harp-hawks of Springdale will always persevere. Go Hawks!
Well, very well done. I knew I was in trouble when I asked one of the kids if I could help sing and they asked that I should just listen. So, anyway. Before we get our meeting started this evening, I'll ask Dr. Rollins to open us in a word of prayer and then we'll do the pledge of allegiance and then we'll get our meeting started. So, Dr. Rollins.
Let's pray together. Dear God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the beauty of our children. We thank you for the professionalism of our teachers. We thank you for the partnership with our parents and community. We just ask that you would continue to bless this work as we work together to define the potential and promise of each of our children. Amen.
All right. Nick, come forward and lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Nick. We'll have you back in a minute. Okay, well, at this point, I'd like to go ahead and call our April board meeting to order. And, board members, you've had the agenda for a few days now, so, Dr. Rollins, are there any adjustments or modifications to the agenda?
Mr. Fluttrell, I would direct you to page three of the agenda. I would like to add an item that we reviewed just a little bit today. Under item C, there at the top of page three, if we could add request of the board of an approval of a resolution supporting all of our elementary schools and middle schools becoming schools of innovation. And really, what this does is just provide the option for our teachers and principals and parents, over time, to look at new innovative strategies and bring those forward. So, as it was said today, this just kind of allows us to walk through the door of this innovation process and we'll work on that over time. But if the board would consider that, I would appreciate it.
Okay. Board, we'll have that one modification to our agenda. That being said, is there a motion to accept the agenda?
Motion.
Motion for Mr. Owenby.
Second.
A second by Ms. McFetridge, so all in favor of accepting the agenda as modified, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There is none? Okay. Next, we also have the minutes of our previous board member meeting on March the 11th and there was a hard copy distributed to us that had one adjustment from what was emailed to us. So, the hard copy on your desk is the one that I would refer to that we need to take action on.
Motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Okay, we have a motion for Mr. Hutchinson.
Second.
Second from, is that you?
Yes.
From Mr. Williams. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? There is none, so the minutes are accepted. All right, the next part of our agenda is opportunity for any patron comments. We would ask if you do come to address the board this evening that you keep your comments brief. We will listen to those comments and we are not able to take action on it this evening, but it would be something that we'd take under advisement in the future. So, if anybody is here that would like to address the board, this is your opportunity to do that. Okay, well, seeing none, I will turn the agenda over to Dr. Rollins to get us started.
Let me invite Nick to come back to the microphone, if you would, please. Yes, if you would do that. We're very glad to have you this evening. Board, if you would turn to page 16 in your agenda, there is a biography there, if you will. Nick is a senior at Harbor High School. His parents are Robert and Shannon Byer. Nick has taken six AP classes at Harbor High, including AP United States History, AP World History, AP Biology, AP Literature, AP Psychology, and AP Statistics. You've been a very busy man and we celebrate that with you, Nick. His favorite class has been AP US History. That sounds a lot like Mr. Stewart's class to me, is that correct?
Yes.
He's a member of the Harbor High School golf team. He's involved in student council, a member of the National Honor Society. He's a member of the Stock Market Club, and we're gonna be interested in that for sure. He's a member of the Distributive Education Clubs of America, a member of Youth for Christ and Fellowship of Christian Athletes. He plans to attend the University of Arkansas in the fall of '14. His goal is to be accepted into the Walton College of Business. He would like to major in marketing, finance, international business, or international marketing. We're very proud of you and the work that you've done at Harbor High School. Please, please recognize. And I know the board would welcome any comments you have about your year or your future, and I know they'll have some questions, but welcome, we're glad to have you.
Yes, sir. I'd like to start off with thanking all of you, the administration of my school for choosing me for this, and the administration of Springdale for giving me this opportunity. So, I guess overall, I've been enrolled in Springdale schools since the beginning, the middle of 4th grade. I'll give you a little history. I was born and raised in New Orleans, Louisiana, and I had just started the 4th grade when Hurricane Katrina came through and destroyed New Orleans. And, so, long story short, we ended up in Springdale, Arkansas. And I mention this history because being in New Orleans, the public school system is a lot different than the public school system here in northwest Arkansas. Some parents work multiple jobs just to keep their parents or their kids enrolled in private schools down in New Orleans. You know, New Orleans is a very different place, significantly crime rate, and just things are a lot different down there for kids in those types of schools. So, I'd like to say I've enjoyed my time in the school system. I'm not gonna stand here and tell you that I've gotten along with every single teacher, every single person, because I'm not exactly the easiest person to get along with, but I will tell you that the teachers in the school system have been very personal and have been very welcoming to helping me as a student. And, so, like you said, you highlighted I was in AP US History, and I would like to say that Mr. Stewart has been my favorite teacher throughout high school. I had him sophomore year for AP US History and I've gotta say, the guy knows what he's doing. He runs a tight ship and Mr. Stewart was always willing to help me with anything I needed and he would always go out of his way just to make sure that everyone and every student knew what he was talking about. And the thing I liked the most about Mr. Stewart, he's a very personal teacher, you know? Some teachers, you'll pass them in the hallways, they won't say hi, I mean, you gotta go out of your way, but Mr. Stewart went out of his way to make sure that every student knew that he cared about them. So, like you said, I am planning to attend the University of Arkansas in the fall. I haven't had a set in stone major yet, but I am interested in international business and international marketing. Throughout high school, I went through Spanish 1 through 4 and I actually took a break this year in Spanish. And so, I'd like to end by saying, Springdale's a great city to live in and this is a great place to go to school. And Springdale school system has always been good to me, so thank you again for this opportunity.
Whoa, 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 whoa. We've been practicing questions all day for you, Nick, so...
Yes, sir.
All right. The Stock Market Club is one of the things on here, so, are you investing together as a club?
So, I joined, I was actually, Ms. Hill and I, she was act, I was actually, let's say it this way, I was the FBLA president in 6th grade and when I went to Hellstone, the FBLA club there, I was the president of that, so I had a relationship with her and then she ended up moving to Harbor High School where she is now. And I was a part of, let's see, Stock Market Club in 10th grade. Didn't do it last year, but then I came back this year and one of the interesting things we did this year, we took a trip to Little Rock, to the capital, I think, and, you know, we went through and we talked to some guys who just, you know, it's crazy to see how managing money is a career and it's awesome to see the different things we saw while we were in Little Rock. And I haven't been extremely active in that club this year, but that field trip, like, I'm not just the type of person who joins clubs to go on field trips, but that field trip was a good experience for me to see the realm of finance.
What's your handicap?
Let's see, my senior year was about 7 and 8. Wish it could've been better, but don't we all?
Mine's I'm 5'1" and about 20 pounds overweight.
Other questions for Nick? Well, I see that you've got your parents back there, so why don't you introduce them to us real quick?
This is my lovely mother in the red, her name's Shannon, and that's my father, Rob, Robert.
Well, you and your family have certainly been a blessing to us, so we're glad you're in Springdale and I know it wasn't under the best circumstances that you arrived here, but we're certainly glad that you're here and you've been a great addition to our community, so, good luck to you.
Thank you.
And we'll hope that the Arkansas Razorbacks' record over the LSU Tigers is a lot better now that you're a big school down there.
That's right, that's right. All right, thanks, Nick.
Thank you.
If I could ask Dr. Morley and Dr. Stuman to come forward, we'll begin our recognitions and, ladies and gentlemen, you're in for quite a treat, I can assure you. And Kathy, we might ask Mr. Delosier and Melanie Bradford to come forward and join us. Guys, y'all come forward and stand here with us. These two are great leaders of the environmental and spatial technology, I would say, program, but it's more like a movement in our state today. It's growing rapidly and I think it represents the very best in schooling today and in the future. Thank you.
We've been, we talked to you some about the East program, you've heard a lot about the East program. We have a lot to crow about here in Springdale, the accomplishments of our kiddos at the conference recently, and I do want to introduce, first of all, these two folks, Dr. Rollins has talked about them. Melanie Bradford is with the Arkansas Department of Education and is our connection through the department for East. Matt Dozier, standing next to her, is the CEO of East, our national group. We are very proud, we call them Melanie and Matt, you know? We are very proud to have them here in our town. They're here reviewing additional sites for us, for East programs, and we are really excited for the relationship and to get to work, continue to work with them. I also have up here with me is Dr. Regina Stuman, and I'm gonna step back from the microphone here in just a minute because I want you to meet some incredible, incredible young folks and learn about some of the accomplishments and things that they've done. So, Dr. Stuman?
You bet, you bet. I'm so proud to be in front of you tonight about the accomplishments of our East team and I need to go ahead and ask Mr. Worthy and the kids to join me because it is about nothing about me. It is all about the facilitator and the kids, of which there are only, how many do we have here tonight? Six, representing about 100, oh, seven! Representing about 115 back at school that are in the program. When Matt and Melanie, we originally talked about having this when we opened Sonora, we were very excited. We knew about the success that had happened at the other schools in Springdale. And the key thing, real early in the game, was it depends on who your facilitator is and that you have to have the best person in the position. And I'm telling you, we have been very blessed to have Mr. Josh Worthy in that position. He has been in a leadership role with that for us. I know he has continued to participate at the state level in that manner too. But he has really taken that program and our building and made it successful for children. And we do have, as I said, these children here tonight, but I'm gonna turn it over to him and let him tell you about the accomplishments of these children. Have you all been able to see the video yet? Did they get to view the video?
Some have.
Okay, okay. Well, what I can tell you is when the announcement was made that night and Josh and I were sitting at the table, and it's one of those things that happened in slow motion, and when they started announcing the winners, it all was in, it was, Matt, it was like in slow motion and Josh and I started picking up and I don't even remember what he said to me. We both realized at the same time what was about to be said and we cried as hard as the kids did, we were all so excited. The work that they do is absolutely amazing and I'm just thrilled to be here, standing up here with them and I'm gonna let the true workers tell you about it.
So, once a year, it's usually in March, all the East schools in Arkansas and in the entire nation get together for conference, and you guys have heard about that story. And they get a chance to showcase a lot of their accomplishments and a lot of the things that they've done through the year. And we got to see you guys earlier this year at our school and that's where a lot of the ideas had gotten started. We talked about several different things. We talked about, you know, the idea of a weather balloon. We talked about the idea of creating a smartphone app. We talked about our summer camp and some new toys that we had played with that were called LaunchPads. And the cool thing about conferences, you get to bring all this together and showcase what you've done, not only in your classroom but in the community. And it wasn't just, you know, these seven kids, it was five other schools. And I want to go ahead and call ahead, or the four other East programs, you guys come ahead and join us, please.
We followed in the footsteps of many successful programs before us.
Right. One thing that the five facilitators in this district really has put together is East isn't a competition, it's a problem-solving community that does some really cool things with very young people. And all five programs were able to represent our school district and our state to a very, very high level. And so, I'm gonna have each facilitator come and talk a little bit, but Sonora's had a really great year and they were recognized for some great accomplishments. Kayden here, who was seven at the time, he got first place in a video production competition. He made a stop-motion video with Legos and it was featured in the White House Film Festival that they held this year, and so, that was really exciting, yeah. Our school received a superior rating again this year and then we also were awarded the Founder's Award, which was very unique because it's the first elementary school to ever receive this award, which you guys saw bits and pieces of in the video. So, I'm gonna introduce Ms. Debbie Lamb, Harbor High School's facilitator, because everything that we're doing kinda started with her. And so, you know, we're taking notes and she kinda got things started in the district with this.
Y'all did great. What a privilege it is to be here tonight and I just want to say that it was just an honor to be at conference this year, to see Sonora, us to be able to pass on the torch to Sonora, and they did an amazing job, these kids did phenomenal. I was so proud of them and they just did great. And it was also a wonderful experience to see Westwood Elementary, I thought they did a great job, they brought the, and I'll let them speak, but I just want to congratulate them too because they had the national project and were able to be a finalist for that. Then, Ms. Brittany Berry, first year to bring the Superior Award. It was so humbling to see all of these students. And then we've got Springdale High School, who was a Founder's finalist too. So, to me, it was such an honor to see all of these students do an amazing job. And my kids, I was so proud of them as well. We had a couple of them who won, actually, a video award. Cory and Jonathan over there, who actually won a competition. And we had Victoria, who was an ambassador speaker there. Ms. Penya was so great to be with me, I could not do this without her, she goes with me every year, it was just a privilege to have her with me. The other students that I have here today, Taylor, Gabby, and, let's see, who do I have? Lydia and Peyton, they all are amazing students and it was just a privilege to have them on board. what you've done, not only in your classroom, but in the community. And it wasn't just, you know, these seven kids, it was five other schools. And I want to go ahead and call ahead, or the four other East programs, you guys come ahead and join us, please.
We followed in the footsteps of many successful programs before us.
Right. One thing that the five facilitators in this district really has put together is East isn't a competition. It's a problem-solving community that does some really cool things with very young people. And all five programs were able to represent our school district and our state to a very, very high level. And so I'm gonna, I'm gonna have each facilitator come and talk a little bit. But Sonora's had a really great year, and they were recognized for some great accomplishments. Kayden here, who was seven at the time, he got first place in a video production competition. He made a stop-motion video with Legos, and it was featured in the White House Film Festival that they held this year. And so, that was really exciting, yeah. Our school received a superior rating again this year, and then we also were awarded the Founder's Award, which was very unique because it's the first elementary school to ever receive this award, which you guys saw bits and pieces of in the video. So, I'm gonna introduce Ms. Debbie Lamb, Harbor High School's facilitator, because everything that we're doing kinda started with her. And so, you know, we're taking notes, and she kinda got things started in the district with this.
Y'all did great. What a privilege it is to be here tonight, and I just want to say that it was just an honor to be at conference this year, to see Sonora, us to be able to pass on the torch to Sonora. And they did an amazing job, these kids did phenomenal, I was so proud of them, and they just did great. And it was also a wonderful experience to see Westwood Elementary, I thought they did a great job, they brought the, and I'll let them speak, but I just want to congratulate them, too, because they had the national project and were able to be a finalist for that. Then Ms. Brittany Berry, first year to bring the Superior Award. It was so humbling to see all of these students. And then we've got Springdale High School, who was a Founder's finalist, too. So, to me, it was such an honor to see all of these students do an amazing job. And my kids, I was so proud of them as well. We had a couple of them who won actually a video award. Cory and Jonathan over there, who actually won a competition. And we had Victoria, who was an ambassador speaker there. Ms. Penny was so great to be with me, I could not do this without her, she goes with me every year, it was just a privilege to have her with me. The other students that I have here today, Taylor, Gabby, and, let's see, who do I have? Lydia and Peyton, they all are amazing students, and it was just a privilege to have them on board. I don't want to take up or hog the time, but I just want to say what a privilege it was to be with each and every one of you all and to work together with this group.
I'm Remington Myers, the East facilitator at Springdale High School, and just to echo what they said, we were very proud of the East program as a whole in the school district. And as I said, this was our first year to be named Founder's Award finalist. We were one of the five schools that was recognized as one of the finalists for that award, and we were very happy to lose to such a great group of kids. Once we saw their cute little faces up there, we knew we didn't stand a chance. So, we were fine with that, and it was our second year winning the Superior Rating, which is the highest rating you can get, and so we're very proud with the accomplishments we've made, and we hope to help our, we hope to help Springdale School District keep the Founder's Award in the Springdale School District in the coming years as well.
Ms. Katie, come on. Great job. Come right on.
I'd first like to introduce the Westwood East kids. We have A.J. Atkins, Spencer Hornsey, and his mom is here, Ms. Linda Coger, Jackson Bussel, Nathan Womack, and his mother, April, is also in the audience with us today, Natalie Herrera, Mariah Davis, and her parents are in the audience, Kevin and Kathy today, and Amanda Henry. This year, these East students helped write many grants, and we were awarded over $200,000 this year with the help of them brainstorming and helping to write parts of these grants, which directly impacted our time at conference. At this year, at East Conference, like Mr. Worthy, I believe, said, or no, I think that it was Debbie, that we displayed two of our aeroponic systems in the large display area at conference. The National Service Project for Conference was a health and wellness. East students were challenged to look for solutions to engaging more people in healthy eating and active living practices. We were a finalist for this competition, and with some of the feedback from the judges saying that this was the best project in demonstrating the complexity of the obesity problem and the use of data and evidence to support our obesity issues. And we were also runner-up in a Students for Healthy Communities competition hosted by the Arkansas Center for Health Improvement, and we won a GoPro camera. And then Jackson, you wanna come up and have you have something to say?
My name is Jackson Bussel, I am a second-year East student at Westwood. I would like to personally thank Dr. Rollins and members of the school board for their continued support of East in our school district. Because of your support, we get to continue our projects when we get to go to Helen Tyson next year. This is going to help extend and take our current projects much further, which will help our community even more. We would like to give each of you an honorary East memberships, and thanks for all you do to support us. Thank you.
I guess the newest school gets to go last, so I'm Brittany Berry, I'm the East facilitator at Helen Tyson, and we were humbled enough this year to, our first year out, to be selected as a Superior program. The kids have put in a lot of hard work, and I have to say a lot of thank yous in this moment because it is a direct representation of the other East facilitators and their program that are here today. When Helen Tyson found out last year that we would be getting an East program, I was lucky enough to visit the schools that already have them, to build a foundation for our program on their advice and their knowledge and their experience. This year, I've benefited from the students who have been coming up from Westwood and their ability to expand on what they've already learned, send many emails to Mrs. Lamb asking questions that she's been able to clarify for me. I have students who have been working on a project with another group of students at Springdale High School, so we've gone up on Saturdays and they work together, and they're on Google emails, sending back ideas most days in class, being able to, you know, cross-collaborate. So, it's just been, really, that Superior is a representation of East in Springdale and not just East at Helen Tyson. And then we have another student, we have a couple of students who will be presenting on another project later on that involved East at Helen Tyson, and it's just really exciting because it's such an amazing addition to our school that has impacted so many kids, not just the 100 kids in my classroom, but I think our school as a whole, and we're just very grateful to be able to offer our students this opportunity. Thank you.
Well, don't run off just yet. Certainly tremendous accomplishment for each one of you, students and teachers and principals, and really, as we got to look through our agenda and read kinda through the list of finalists and understand, I guess there are five East programs that we've heard from tonight, all of which have been recognized. If I understood, Dr. Rollins and I meet each day before a board meeting, we're adding five more next year, and really, what we try to figure out is the best way to have student engagement, because you guys would probably get bored if we just talked to you and taught at you all the time. Is it more fun to do those East projects? Yes, she's nodding her head yes. So, I mean, as we go around and we get an opportunity to see the work that you're doing in your classrooms and your schools, it is just awesome, and we're so thankful for what you do and how much you pour into it, whether it's, you know, arts or athletics, that we'll get to hear from in just a minute. I mean, all of those things to be engaged in your learning is so important, so, way to go, stay motivated, keep coming back all the time and bringing us this great news. Good job, way to go. Are there any, are there any parents that are here? All the parents of East students, please stand up and be recognized as well, yes. Very good, thank you.
Okay, if, students, if you'd like to be seated, I'd like for the East group to stay right here. The Sonora East, if you'll stay right here for just a moment, we'll let everybody else be seated. Mr. Dozier, would you please come stand with us? Regina, in the emotion of the moment, I don't know if all of your students were introduced. Would you make sure that they introduce themselves, Josh, or you do it?
Guys gotta get out in front of me, 'cause I'm gonna step on you. All right, so we've got a wide range of kids. On the left, we've got Morgan Bergstrom, he's in fifth grade. We've got Landon Ferguson, who is in fifth grade. We've got second grader Kayden Azarud. We've got fifth grader Kalissa Cochran, fifth grader Lexus Kirkpatrick, and then fourth grader Ricky Vaughn, I'm gonna call her Kylie, I'm gonna call her Ricky Miller, and Kylie, anyways. We got Ricky Vaughn, who's in fourth grade, and then we have Kylie Miller, who's also in fourth grade.
We are so proud of y'all. And Josh, just so the audience will know, this group of young people from Sonora Elementary were named the number-one East Initiative in the nation.
I don't know.
Great job.
Yeah. I don't know if I explained that really well, sorry.
Matt, we would welcome any comments you have as well. Again, Mr. Matt Dozier, who leads this initiative, and we're so thankful for his partnership.
Show them some of your bling, guys. That also came with an awful lot of new toys, didn't it? We were not terribly surprised that Sonora wound up as a Founder's winner. Last year was the first year we'd ever had an elementary finalist, and it was Sonora. We're also not terribly surprised that it was Sonora because there's magic going on in Springdale. And it's not just in East, there's magic going on in Springdale. Ms. Bradford and I work with school districts across the state and sometimes across the country, I'm actually just her driver, but what you are a part of should be more than just an example for everybody else, it should be the way everybody else runs a school district. These guys, these guys, the work that they're doing, the complexity and the sophistication, the community service, the sheer joy of learning, it is astounding to watch that happen, not because we don't think that it's possible, but because it doesn't stop. Kylie and Ricky gave the best presentations we have ever seen in our life. I was fortunate enough, I was fortunate enough to be standing on the side of the stage watching it, because, I'll just tell the story, okay, you ready? When we went to get them, because they all kinda did that elementary school thing where they all bunched together when they got called, and Tim Stevenson, our founder, and I were standing there going, are they coming, are they not coming, did somebody pass out? And so we went over there, and we got Kylie and Ricky, and we helped escort them to the stage, and they're giving me that look like, uh-oh, you know? We actually did it, we actually got this far, and I looked at Ricky and I said, "You gonna be okay?" She's like, "Yeah." And she got up on stage, and I've seen 1,000 TED Talks, I've been in the room with sitting presidents, I've been in the room with some people that get paid large, large sums of money to do a far worse job than you did, to motivate people, okay, to inspire them. And to see how this connects to what you're doing in your middle grades, to see where that turns in at the high school level, to know what is coming up in the next several years in Springdale with East, has us very excited. Ms. Bradford and I are going to be visiting 13 of your schools over the next two days. And when we get done with that, as Dr. Rollins mentioned, there's gonna be growth, and there's gonna be growth after that, and we're gonna keep growing here as long as you will have us. We believe very strongly that the work that's going on at the Springdale Schools is exactly the sort of thing that needs to be spotlighted. You missed him, but Mr. Charlie Fitzpatrick got on a plane this afternoon and flew home after our conference, after Ricky and Kylie and all the other good work that has been done by your schools. Mr. Fitzpatrick, who is the Senior Vice President for K-12 Education and Libraries for ESRI, the number-one GIS software developer in the world, he called his boss, Jack Dangerman, who is the sole owner of a Fortune 100 company, and said, "I need to come to Springdale." And he spent two days working directly with your kids, and he has come away with a brand-new appreciation, and what you don't understand yet is, Mr. Dangerman now understands what GIS can do in elementary grades, 'cause they had no idea. So, we are privileged and proud to be part of your larger efforts. I'm lucky that I get to come up here and hang out with your kids sometimes, and we could not be more proud of the work that is going on across your district, particularly where it comes to East. Thank you for all you do.
Who's driving?
I have to make one comment, I've been thinking, I forgot to say that, I have the privilege of rooming with these two ladies. And the night before, you know, they don't know if they're gonna win, but if they win, they know they're gonna give the speech. And, now, I know a lot of adults, and I think that's what you were referencing, a lot of adults who are truly terrified of getting up and talking in front of people, it's a true fear. Mr. Worthy may be one of them, but it's a true, true fear, and they're going to bed, and where a lot of adults wouldn't be able to sleep, you know, they're giggling, they're not gonna practice anything. You know, there's this one part that I kinda, and they each had one part that they knew in their head was a trouble spot, they each wanted to go through that one part, they went, "I'm good," and snores began. So, I just thought, what a testament also back to the program to allow children this opportunity before they develop that fear, before they even know it's a common fear. And what these ladies did, I think one of the reasons Mr. Worthy and I didn't make a big deal earlier, Dr. Rollins, is we're still a little bit shocked at this. And it was truly, it truly was a magical night, and we were all huddled together, and when they were taken from us to go up on the stage, it was just like, it was like magic watching them, and I thank several parents for watching it live while it was going on, and it was just, it was really a special event and moment to see these elementary kids shine like that. So, thank you for letting us come and share with you tonight.
Thank y'all. Good job again. Thank y'all, thank you, Josh.
Uh-uh, I can't even shut mine down, man.
Thanks, Doc. Thank y'all, Melanie.
Well, I can't wait to get home and see that video. Have you seen it?
Coach Stellic, takes a very brave man to follow that, but we're glad you're here, and we know we've got some other phenomenal kids to recognize, and coaches.
Top that magic from that group right there. Mr. James, school board members, Dr. Rollins, Cynthia, we would like to introduce the 7A West Men's Conference Championship Basketball Team. I believe it was 1998, we hung a banner in the gym. I look forward to next year with Coach Stamps and these young men hanging one more. Coach Stamps, please share some words on this year's team.
First of all, first of all, we thank you for bringing us here tonight, have the opportunity to speak with you, but also be here is awesome. And this group, from day one, has been a group that, we knew we were gonna, we had talent. You know, Coach White and I worked them hard, and we saw the talent piece came out early. And we didn't know how successful we were gonna be, as we went through the season, we had some, you know, some adversity and faced some things, but I'm convinced that the leadership from our seniors, six of them, was the difference in putting us over the top. We, you know, we never stopped believing in each other, this group fought for each other all year long, they started to play for each other, and it was a delight to see as a coach, and I'm very proud of these young men. And, you know, it was, it was an outstanding year, we got to the biggest stage that you can get to, you know, in high school basketball, and that was the state championship. And I know that the memories that these young men will have from just being there with each other in Hot Springs the day leading up, some of the things that took place the day of, and all that, those memories are memories of a lifetime, and I know they'll carry those with them for the rest of their life. So, thank you.
Let's introduce everybody, we certainly want to know who they all are.
Start.
Go ahead.
You want me? Huh?
Take that microphone off and hand it to them.
It's unbelievable how this group plays in front of 6,000 people in the state finals, and the most nervous I've ever seen them is today when they thought they were gonna have to talk. We'll start at this end, and just, all you have to do is say your name and your class.
I'm Trig Eckwood, and I'm 2015.
Chris Orange Jr.
Traceon Goss Jr.
Tyler Tutt Jr.
DJ Evans Sr.
Brendan Cook Sr.
Corey Stewart Sr.
Josiah Weimer Sr.
Drake Weimer, sophomore.
Zach Schlesinger Sr.
My assistant coach back here, Coach Greg White, tremendous asset to us and what we do.
Do any of them want to give us a speech? I want to make sure they have that opportunity, if they wanted to give us a speech. There you go.
Well, first, I just want to thank you guys for letting us come, and I just want to let you guys know that I love this team with all my heart. Not only did we win a lot of games and we went to the biggest stage, but this team has made, made me have a lot of memories. Um, with Coach White, he's been my coach since ninth grade, and so, he's been on my team since, uh, about a good three years now. And I've been playing with these guys, these seniors, for about a good three years too, but yeah, thank you, guys.
Any other questions?
Coach, just want to say thanks to you, I mean, with your leadership and, uh, these guys had a couple, a couple of really tough losses kind of early in the season, and, uh, and the character they showed was just, just amazing. And you had a lot of folks pulling for you guys. I don't know if you know it or not, a lot of folks were pulling for you, and, uh, really proud of what, what you've done here.
Thank you, Jeff. That means a lot, and, you know, to kind of piggyback what you're talking about, we talk all the time about, you know, things that are out of your control. You know, sometimes, uh, you know, there's character built, and I can flashback just right off the top of my head, and you mentioned a couple disappointing losses, and I know it hurts for these guys to even talk about it, but, uh, there was a point in the season where we were rocking along, um, on a roll, and then we had a matchup with Bentonville. And, uh, you know, it was two undefeated, uh, conference teams playing, uh, all week long. You know, the, the local media, um, and everybody was in our gym all week. They were prepping this as the, matter of fact, it was the state high school game of the week when we played them. Our gym was packed. I know they had to turn people away, and we controlled the game for about three quarters or so. Uh, they made a little run late, and then some unfortunate events happened, and, uh, you know, a magic point eight gets put on the clock, and we lose a heartbreaker. And at that point in time, there could have been some things that took place that, that maybe would have pulled the bottom out from under us, but I, I'll never forget, uh, for me, uh, that, you know, because I obviously didn't sleep that night and, uh, was worried about these guys and how they were going to respond, and the next day at school, uh, Coach White and I had talked about, "We're not even going to put on the shoes today. Uh, today's a mental day," and, and tried to get this group back, and we met in my office, and, uh, you know, we had the, the lamps on, the candles out, and it was a therapy session, and we got a lot of things out. And, uh, at that point in time, leaving that day, I knew that the sky's the limit for this group. So, thank you, Jeff.
Well... Congratulations. I think Jeff said it the best, you know, that any of us could have said, so way to go, way to hang in there, and we're certainly proud of you guys. Did any of you guys' parents come tonight? Any of them in the crowd? They just let you guys be anymore, huh? Nope. There we go. Hello. All right, good deal. Don't forget your trophy.
Coach Stellic, we want to thank you as well. What a great job you've done in terms of bringing, uh, our programs forward. We're so proud of you. Thank you for your contribution. You bet. Ms. Garrett? There she is. Board, we're on Item D on the first page of the agenda. Ms. Kim Garrett, our Assistant Superintendent for Critical Instruction at the high school levels.
President Luttrell, members of the board, Dr. Rollins, um, each year about this time, Northwest Arkansas Community College recognizes seniors as the Inwak Rising Scholars. And so, today, Diana Johnson is here from Inwak to recognize some of our seniors from both Harbor and Springdale High School.
First of all, let me thank you for allowing me to come and to recognize these students. They are being recognized because they have completed 12 college credit hours or more and have maintained a 3.0 college GPA or higher, so they have really taken the first step towards their college transition. And, um, the students will receive a certificate and a medal. The Springdale students won't get their certificate tonight because we're also going to recognize them at their May 9th award ceremony. We wanted to have something to give them at both times. So, um, as I call your name, if you'll come forward, uh, there are 12 students that will be recognized tonight. So, from Harbor High, we have Maggie Bernard. Okay. Garrett Blankers. Okay. And Adrian McDaniel. All right. Okay, all right. So, from Springdale High School, we have Gabriel Billingsley. Excuse me. Callie Boland. Aspen Edwards. Excuse me, and I'm going to slaughter this name, and I apologize. Eva Juregui. And I apologize. All right. Matthew Sherry. Baseball game, all right. Victoria Smith. Corey Stewart. Ah, Corey. Congratulations. Good job. All right. Madeline Williams. And Ashton Wilson.
Before I turn the microphone over to students, because I know you want to hear from them and not me, I also want to recognize Springdale High School, so if Mr. Jinks would come down here. Any school that has 10% of their concurrently enrolled students achieve this award, we recognize as an early college experience school, and so, this year, we're presenting Springdale High School with a plaque, um, designating them as an early college experience school.
Thank you very much.
So, congratulations.
Okay, which one of you want to go first? Share with us anything about your year in school. I'll be back. There we go. All right.
Hi, I'm Ashton, so I'd like to say it's definitely an honor to be able to be here tonight. It's good to know that hard work's not going unrecognized, because I know that I've slaved over every test that I've taken this year, and I know everyone standing in line has too, so it's good to know that, that we're taking the initiative to carry on and make sure that our hard work is going to pay off in the end, so it's good to know.
How many hours of college credit do you have at this point?
Do I have? 15, I believe. So...
Anybody else, any more than 15? That's enough right there, just to get started. Well, that's tremendous. That is great.
Well, we want to thank our partnership with Northwest Arkansas Community College. Ms. Johnson's been fantastic, worked with our kids and, uh, working with both Harbor and Springdale High School to give these opportunities to our kids, and she's continued to do so. Uh, I believe you just got recognized as an online provider?
Yes, we were approved by the state to be a digital learning provider, so if the ninth graders need an online class, we're ready to help.
And, uh, her having two students, one's going to be graduating Springdale High School, and one that's, uh, has previously, yeah, she's been a great partner with both schools, and, uh, we really appreciate her partnership with Inwak, giving our kids the opportunity to be able to take on some challenging courses to prepare them for next year.
Great job. Well, good. Congratulations. Good job, pal.
Dr. Jones?
In an instant, we're going to turn this room into a fabulous art gallery, and we're going to, yay! And, um, what is so amazing is that we're not just, um, very good in a couple of things, we are across the board good. I say that humbly. So, if Ms. Abby Richardson would join me and have her gallery of artists, um, present their pictures of the 2014 Northwest Regional Art Show. So, Abby, thank you.
Thank you for inviting me. I don't think so. Thank you. Thank you so much for having us today. Thank you, Dr. Jones, for inviting us. Um, before we talk about the program that I gave you all and introduced the kids, um, I just wanted to introduce myself and give you a little bit of background about why we're here today. My name is Abby Richardson. I'm an art teacher at Elmdale and Turnbow Elementary. Those are my awesome principals over there. Hi! I'm also the Art Ed Director for Northwest Arkansas, and our region in Northwest Arkansas covers 10 counties, some as far east as Cersei and Marion County. All the directors in Arkansas are in charge of facilitating a regional show each year. It's a juried show for K-12 students so that they can showcase their visual art abilities and gain some experience competing in an area where they excel. So, with all that being said, out of the 10 counties in Northwest Arkansas, Springdale Schools had 13 winners who placed in this year's show, 13 students who placed in this year's show. Six of those are first-place winners whose work will advance to the state show in Little Rock next year, or next month, sorry. And I really do believe this is a testament of the amazing talent, once again, that we have here in Springdale, talented students as well as talented art teachers. So, without further ado, I would love to introduce the students who came today so that you can see their amazing talent. On the inside of the program I gave you, I've made little marks next to the winners, and most of them are here today. First, I'd like to start by introducing the art teachers that are here. Dawn Graham from Harbor High is here. Yay, Dawn Graham! Mary Trulock from Westwood. Susan Jones from TJ Smith and JB Hunt. Tim Malesso and Shelley Minlock unfortunately could not be here today. Teachers, if you could just help the students, make sure they kind of line up in front of the board members. All right, guys. First place in first grade, Chelsea Mosqueda from TJ Smith.
That's beautiful.
Still in first grade, second place, Giselle Aguiray, and I don't think she is here, from Walker. Third place from Turnbow, Jenica Pinya. In second grade, first place, Savannah Nolan from TJ Smith. Second place in second grade, Alondra Mendosa from TJ Smith. Third place in second grade, Garrett Shugley from Elmdale. In third grade, first place, Olivia Whitney from JB Hunt. Fourth grade, first place, Dulce Martinez from Westwood. In fifth grade, first place, Brayden Deets from JB Hunt. Third place in fifth grade, Braylon Williams from TJ Smith, TJ Smith. And skipping ahead to ninth grade, second place, Jesus Martinez from Southwest Junior High. In 10th grade, third place, Audrey McMoran from Harbor High. She is not here. But that is her art. In 11th grade, first place, Millie Pianalto from Harbor High. Springdale really is awesome.
Well, I tell you what, that is really impressive. You said what talented students we have. Obviously, there is a commitment to art by some of you and some of your teachers as well. When you look and you see that there were six first-place winners, K-12 and the state of Arkansas, you kids have done some awesome work. I mean, I can draw a stick man, and that's about it. That is absolutely terrific, so... What about parents of these students? Are any moms or dads or grandmas and grandparents? There we go. Please stand. All right. Yes, let them see your good work. That is, good job. Anything else? Marcia want to say something, or she take?
And I imagine if we had an auction right now, we could pay off any debt we have.
Thank you, Abby. Abby serves us as the, as the regional coordinator, and it's phenomenal for our district to have this many winners across the region, so I'm looking forward to seeing the state response. So, thanks, and thanks for all the talent of our teachers. Oh, my gosh.
Thank you very much.
Great job. Good job. Come here, let me see that. That angel, please? We know you didn't teach him how to draw.
Do we need to call the tech team? Mr. Luttrell, I think you would agree, this has been a history-making night already. Uh, the announcement that Mr. Hoover's about to make will add to that in a phenomenal way. Mr. Don Hoover, our principal at George Junior High.
Well, I think in the spirit of all the arts we've seen tonight, this is definitely a great point to bring this up. Um, can I have Mike, where's Mr. Echols? Of course, and, uh, of course, and Mr. Moore, y'all come up here. And I'd like for Mr. Robinson to join us as well. Come on, too bad. For the first time in the history of the state of Arkansas, in 70 years of this Midwest Clinic and Conference, uh, George Junior High School has been accepted to play, uh, this December in Chicago. Uh, that, I'll reiterate that. That is the first time in the history of Arkansas junior high has been awarded this honor, so it's really important. We have been preceded by Springdale High in about '94, Russell, '93, '93, in Harbor just a few years ago, and so, our- And so our great high schools have been there, but they paved the way for our junior high to get there. So I'm not going to talk much. I want Mr. Echols to talk to you about the upcoming event and just some things that have been really exciting for us as a school. And where music has put another great George Junior High School on the international map. So, Mr. Echols?
Okay, first of all, commercial.
I guess that would be me, if you guys would help pass those out. Hello, Board, it's good to see you again. Last time we saw each other was at our luncheon at George Junior High. And we hit you with a one-two punch of information. And at that time, we didn't know much about the information. It was just straight off our emails. And as the weeks have gone by, we've learned some more information. So what you're looking at right there before you is the press release for the NAMM Support Music Merit Award that was received by Kelly Middle School and George Junior High. 2,000 schools were surveyed across the country and 96 were selected. And so we are honored, Ms. Pinkston from Kelly Middle School, to share this recognition. Three schools from the state of Arkansas were recognized. Kelly Middle School, George Junior High, and Southside High School. I'd like to call your attention to the middle of the press release. There's eight items, criteria, for being selected for this award. And just to highlight a few. In Springdale, we offer daily music classes for instruction, high levels of student achievement. We target 100% of the school's participation to be involved in music. And so those are some of the criteria to receive this award. At the bottom of that front page, I would like to read, Mr. Hoover, I could read your quote if you wouldn't mind. You're taller than I. "Music is a pillar of our school. As a young school establishing traditions, music provided opportunities to build foundations for success. Our music programs inspired and synergized an astonishing self-confidence and self-gratification in our students. Music has become a cornerstone for our community." Don Hoover, principal. And I'd also like to read Mrs. Ford's quote for this press release. "The J.O. Kelly Middle School staff is a highly motivated and dedicated group of professionals. The musical memories created at Kelly Middle School will certainly be retained in the minds of our students and school community for a lifetime." So what does this award, this recognition mean? I think it's summed up best on the top paragraph on the back page, which I would like to read to you. "As Kelly Middle School and George Junior High look toward to 2014 and 2015, the announcement of receiving the NAMM Foundation Support Music Award brings attention to the importance of keeping music education part of the school's core education for all students and music vital role in students' success in school. Numerous studies have demonstrated that learning to participate in music can boost other academic and social skills such as math and learning to cooperate in a group." So for that recognition and award, we are thankful for all of our principals and we are thankful for your support, Board. Thank you.
So Mr. Hoover went to Washington DC to represent Springdale to National Principals Conference on Friday. And on Friday, I asked the band, I said, "Anybody, whatever you're thinking about music, just text me." I'll share a couple with you. "Music inspires me to try harder in all my subjects. It lets me express myself when I feel like I have no power elsewhere to do so. If there wasn't any music in schools, I'd drop out. I have always loved music. In elementary school, I quit my GT class because I would have to miss music. One day, I learned that deaf people could feel the music. On social media, many people in their bios put 'music equals life.' For me, that's an honest statement. My parents met each other in the SHS Band. If it wasn't for music, I wouldn't be here." And I sent him one other quote. And we often don't think about some of the most influential people in the world. And so this quote I sent him. "All day, I dream about music." Albert Einstein. So thank you for recognizing that. And we're going to shift over to Midwest. And I'd like to, since there are a lot of people in the room, we spent a lot of time on an acceptance letter. And so, "Dear Midwest Clinic Board Directors and Staff, the moment your email was received to perform at the Midwest International Clinic was absolutely breathtaking. Immediately, thanks were given. God has blessed our students with dedication, skill, passion, and true grit, all of which are the ingredients for the expression and creation of music. With immense pleasure, the George Junior High School Band is honored to accept the invitation extended to perform at the 68th Annual Midwest Clinic to be held at the McCormick Place West in Chicago, Illinois from December 17 through 19, 2014. Advance, please accept our sincere gratitude for the wisdom the Midwest Clinic will instill into our students and the directors of George Junior High. The George Junior High Band, student body, parents, community, Springdale Public Schools, Northwest Arkansas, and the state of Arkansas look forward to this marvelous experiences that await. In return, we hope that what we learn and the culture we share will be a source of knowledge, philosophy, and enlightenment. This will translate and to be meaningful aids for educators in their quest for concepts and strategies to improve instruction for their students. The Midwest venue of artistic expression will help these young people become future leaders in all life challenges. This journey will prove to be an astonishing as well as inspirational voyage preciously embedded in their souls for all time. We thought long and hard about what's important in life. And to so many of these kids, music transforms their lives. It helps them build connections. And if I'm not mistaken, we have 75% of our school involved in music? 78%. Which is unheard of. So these kids are making connections here. And on our trip, we're going to help them make additional connections. We're looking at the Gateway Arch, the James C. Twist House. Want to give them some architecture on this trip. The Johnson County Courthouse, the Cloud State Bank, the Cesar Opera House, the Kon Silmer Instrument Manufacturing Factory, where they make instruments. So they can see how they take a piece of tin and start molding it and how it's tested at the very end. The Demowen Uniform Company, where they make band uniforms. So they can see that. The Shed Aquarium, the Adler Planetarium, the Museum of Science and History. And so everything that we can keep plugging into them, we're going to plug into them. So when they come back, they're going to say, "Oh, I see how this connects with math. I see how this connects with science. I see this." Because we saw that so much with our Biloxi trip. And which was an incredible science adventure and history adventure. And Sherri? Where are you?
We have a little picture that we took when we were at in Biloxi, at the tour center. They have this beautiful tour center down there. And there was this fireplace there. And we imagined back in the old day, before our time, President Roosevelt would have these fireside chats. And people would sit there by the fireside and they would listen to the radios. And he would inspire them and mentor them and give them encouragement. And so we had our fireside chat. And this is with Dr. Rollins and Mrs. Rollins. Do y'all have any questions?
Well, how long will you be gone? You've packed, I mean, you've got your dates here, but you said all those places that you're going to go. Are you really only going to be gone December 17 through the 20th?
Well, as long as possible.
Okay.
To get them as much, much knowledge as possible. So I don't know, somewhere, I'm guessing five to seven days. Biloxi, we did five days, four nights. We did that trip on $99 a student. And that included hotel and most all their food. We had a lot of help and a lot of support. And we're very grateful for that. And we're going to do our best. And we know that, you know, buses will cost $1,000 a night or a day. And we know hotels and, you know, so forth. And so we're just going to do our best we can and come up with the right group that's going to represent us. And we start with beginners. High school bands, they have kids that have been playing three, four, or five years. But our 7th graders who are now beginners, a lot of those kids will be at Midwest. And so Dr. Rollins asked, "Well, how are you going to do that?" And so Monday, a week ago, I visited with the 9th grade band, pulled the 8th graders out, and I said, "Look, Mr. Moore and I, we're not very smart. We're not real talented. We cannot figure out how we can get these kids playing like you are next month by December, and they've been playing less than a year. Except if you guys will teach them. If we'll put them amongst you and you show them your tricks, you show them the ropes, you tell them how things work, and you mentor them into the musicians you are, would you be willing to do that? Because I think you guys can." And they were going, "Yeah, we're doing it." So that's our plan right now. Peer-to-peer mentoring and teaching.
How many students do you think you'll take?
We're going to start out with thinking that we're going to take one bus full. So that'll be a 45 to 50-piece band. When there'll be additional cars traveling with us. If that looks good and the instrumentation looks good, that it's going to balance out, then we'll raise that to as much as we can that, you know, the band's going to sound good. Pat Ellison took 78 when she went. And Jeremy Ford took 70. So, but those are high school groups. So we don't know what that looks like. Once we get into the second bus, if you don't fill the bus, you know the cost of the trip goes way up. So we're going to be mindful of kids' expenses.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, I know it was great that day. Hey, we missed you the day we were at your school, but we knew that you were tied up that day. But when you came in and you'd just gotten the news to share it with us that day, I mean, golly, what a, we were excited and emotional for you too, so.
Well, last year, they had 17,000 people there from 30 different countries and 600 booths of exhibits. It's the largest thing that we can go to in the world.
That's great.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks for your support.
You bet.
Okay. Susan, you ready? Board, we're on Item G, Page 2 of our agenda. Ms. Buchanan, our principal at Helen Tyson Middle School.
We're going to have our team come up with me. And that consists of our band, art, music, East, and some students that helped. And also, Mr. Scott, I'd like you to come up too. And just kind of flank across here if we could. And I'd like also Robert Gearhart and Carrie Harlow from the Northwest Arkansas Food Bank to come up. Hunger is an everyday reality for many of our families in Northwest Arkansas. One of our goals at Helen Tyson is to create caring and compassionate students that give back to the community. With that said, we had a partnership of our art program, our music program, and our East program that kind of problem-solved. And they said, "How can we help this hunger problem in Northwest Arkansas?" And they proceeded to host a fundraiser. And it was called "From Our Hands to Your Hearts." And we raised over $1,000 to feed hungry families in Northwest Arkansas. And it was a true community event that brought in partners. It brought in talent. And I'm just really pleased with the way that our team approached that. And so I'm going to let Ms. Berry with the East talk for just a moment and tell a little bit about the process, Ms. West, and also Mr. Darrow. Because it really was a team approach to solving a problem. And we're just a minor part of that. But we also have an opportunity tonight to present a check to Northwest Arkansas Food Bank.
There are so many people to thank that made this opportunity available to our students and gave us the ability to help the community. I'd first like to say thank you to Ms. Buchanan, Ms. McConnell, and Mr. Patrick, who even though when I wander in the office and say, "We've been thinking, we have an idea," they don't just run or shut the door. That they're very open. And events like this extend a lot of people in the building, them included. And their willingness to spend the extra hours, to put in the extra help, and allow the kids an opportunity to do this is much appreciated. This started actually, once again, I have to brag on our elementary school, as a project for these students that began in their elementary school. And they brought it up to middle school and said, "There's a need. There are too many people that go hungry. Can we do it again?" And so that's where it began. And I'm going to give them a moment at the microphone to kind of tell you a little bit about what they did.
We decided to do, we decided to do "From Our Hands to Your Hearts" because we were inspired from our 5th grade Empty Bowls event at Bay Area. We wanted to bring the event to Helen Tyson. One in four people in Northwest Arkansas face food insecurity every week, and we wanted to do our part to help.
At our event, East was responsible to hand out the tickets to the visitors. Also, we had to hand out the food and decorate the tables. Kids baked cornbread to go with the soup. Some kids made signs about how much the food costs, and they were taking pictures.
East also created the invitations and posters, created a video for the event, and communicated with the Northwest Arkansas Food Bank.
Alright, and at that moment, I'm going to pass it off to Ms. West. And I just want to make it a point, this is Robert Gearhart with Northwest Arkansas Food Bank. We're going to let him speak at the end. I cannot sing enough praises about the organization, so I will let him do it.
I might be the only person to have ever brought about 15 pounds of clay, just to show you where my artist started. The artist of Helen Tyson Middle School began creating these empty bowls with 150 pounds of clay, which is about 10 times this, a willingness to learn the necessary techniques to form the raw clay into pinch and coil and slab pots. And hearts big enough to donate the hard work of their hands so that those less fortunate than themselves could have enough food to eat. The bowls were bisque-fired. These are two of my favorite artists. Don't tell anybody I said favorite. This is Carol Thornton. This is Diana Campos. And they represent, they're just two of over 130 artists in the 6th and 7th grade that I have. They created over 250 bisque and glaze-fired pots and bowls and virtually sold out during their first public sale at our Empty Bowls event, using the work of their hands as well as their hearts to assist the Northwest Arkansas Food Bank. Thanks for having us.
I'm Mr. Darrow, and I'm the band director at Helen Tyson Middle School. And I will let my students speak a little bit as to what our involvement and what our part of the event was. But what I have not heard yet is during all of this, when it was going on, was about the time that we missed how many days of school. And we actually, at one point, had to reschedule this event. And what was quite amazing was just to schedule a band event, you know, with around 200 schools, or 200 students, is quite a feat in itself. But to try to take three different groups within a school and organize an event that we had never done before. I want to thank my colleagues, Ms. West and Ms. Berry and our administration for working with us. But mainly, these students who kept working together. I would walk down the hallways and I would see the East Lab students working on this project. And I would see what they were printing out and seeing the things that they were building. I would look down in Ms. West's room to see the pots that were being glazed and hear her talk about how the So, I want to thank all of the students and our administration for really coming together, because I think it's a tribute to how Helen Tyson works, which is just that team effort all the way around, so... And I will pass it on to Mandy.
The Helen Tyson East Lab Art Department and Band all worked together to organize this event. Students and teachers played a role in making this night a huge success. The band students provided musical entertainment. For several weeks prior to the event, the band students prepared musical presentations in their band classes. The students who performed invited their parents and community members to attend. During the musical presentations, those in attendance were able to enjoy a soup dinner, look at, and bed on artwork that was created by the art students, and learned statistics about hunger in Northwest Arkansas that had been researched and compiled by the East Lab students. Planning this event was a great way to see how the students and teachers at Helen Tyson can work together to support such an important cause. Thank you.
At a band's standpoint, we were all excited to perform for... we were all excited to perform. But he was even more special, to perform for a fundraiser. The community came out to support the Food Bank, and they got good food, great music, and beautiful artwork. And thanks to the East Program, it all formed together to make one thousand dollars.
This is Mr. Robert Gearhart, and he is the Special Events and Marketing Coordinator for the Northwest Arkansas Food Bank. And we have the great pleasure at Helen Tyson to present a check which we've already given to him and let him deposit in the bank. But we'd like to award the Northwest Arkansas Food Bank a thousand dollars. And, Mr. Gearhart.
Thank you, Board, for having us out. Thank you, Helen Tyson, for this great event. They approached us and said, "We want to do this event." They made the clay pots. Usually, across the country, they do this same program. But they purchased the bowls from professional artists. These bowls were made by true artisans, the children of Helen Tyson. We appreciate you guys stepping up. The Springdale School District has sixty-three percent food insecurity in the school district. They're the leader of the Big Four. All four brought together, it's fifty-one percent. Food insecurity means they don't know where their next meal's coming from. To see the students step up and take it upon themselves to say, "I want to do something different. I want to help prevent this. I want to help end this," is remarkable. And my hat's off to you guys. I think that they're going to make this an annual event, and I have hopes, and the school has hopes, to make this an event across all Springdale School District, to raise awareness and to bring light to the issue that their fellow student may not know where their dinner's coming from. Thank you.
Hey, Susan, before... I don't need to interrupt you if you're not done. I want to make sure everybody has an opportunity to introduce themselves and tell us what grade they're in, and then we'll get parents, too, if you don't mind.
Okay. I'll let you introduce yourself and just tell what grade you're in, okay? Just pass the mic.
I'm Angela Zavala, and I'm in sixth grade.
I'm Arlene Delgado, and I'm in sixth grade.
I'm Natalie Pera, and I'm in sixth grade.
I'm Jorge Luna, and I'm in sixth grade.
I'm Joseph Apsher, and I'm in seventh grade.
I'm Amanda Darrow, and I'm in seventh grade.
I'm Carol Thornton, and I'm in seventh grade.
I'm Diana Campos, and I'm in seventh grade.
And I couldn't do this without my team, and this is Mr. Patrick Scott. And all of us work together, as we said, it is a team effort. And that one thousand dollars will provide five thousand meals. So, I think we made an impact, and it is going to be an annual event. And thank you for having us and letting us share this with you. Parents, stand up if you're here tonight. We'd love to see you. I know we brought some ourselves, and, yeah, sometimes we owe the transportation. Here's some parents right over here, and they're kind of in the corner. Thank you, Dr. Rollins.
Way to go, way to go. Great job, guys.
Need to figure a way to spread that thousand dollars, five thousand meals, at my house. Great job, guys.
Good job.
Very good.
Ms. Buchanan, you just need to let us know when you're going to do this next year. Maybe email us.
We'll send you invitations, and get there early. You'll want to get the best heart.
It's been kind of long, but it's great.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Ms. Childress, how are you doing?
Great, thank you.
Could be dancing, or it could be playing soccer, or it could be recognizing achievement at all levels. Thank you for your leadership.
Absolutely, absolutely. Dr. Rollins asked us to come tonight and share with you a little bit about the Marshallese Academic Achievement Nights that we do. For two years now, it has been a targeted goal of ours to get more involvement in our school from our Marshallese families. And many of you board members probably know that I spent... A few years ago, I spent two summers in a row in the Marshall Islands, teaching summer school and doing workshops for teachers. And so, I had some great cultural experiences and some things that have really impacted my work with my student body. And then, two summers ago, when I was going through the ESL Academy, there was a speaker that was sharing with us, and I don't even remember who it was or what it was, but I had this aha moment that I really needed to get targeted and focused on getting more of our Marshallese families involved in our school. And I thought back to my experiences in those two summers in the islands, and one of the things that I thought about was, in the schools on the island, parents are very involved in the schools. If there is a school meeting, a school event, every mom and dad comes, every grandmother and grandfather comes. So, it is the traditional cultural norm that those families be very involved in their child's schools, and that they be there, and they be present, and they be an integral part of the education system. And so, Julie, my ESL specialist and I, and teachers, we started thinking about, what can we do at Monitor to make it the cultural norm for our families? Not... And not our way, but their way, and thinking about the things that matter to them, and the things that are important to them, and just being really culturally responsive, and making sure that our school is welcoming to their culture, and what can we do to make it a place where they really feel comfortable and want to be involved. And so, that has been a very targeted focus of ours for two years. And the information you have in front of you in your packet, one of the things that is very important in the Marshallese culture are celebrations. Celebrations are very, very important. Celebrating first birthdays, celebrating weddings, celebrating graduation. And so, we want to make celebrating education that next big celebration what's very, very important. And so, that's what this Marshallese Academic Achievement Night is. And through these celebrations, that the families help us plan, and that we do in their cultural style, we're also sending a message about what's worth celebrating in education. And you can see, I think you have the picture, I think you have this page of the pictures, but, you know, the very first thing we celebrate at each one of our events is perfect attendance, because it's... You can't learn if you're not there. And we also, as you can see in the next picture, send a message about how important it is that that learning and that school involvement culminate in being proficient or advanced on the benchmark. And those are all of our Marshall Islander students who are proficient or advanced on the 2013 benchmark. So, we have now had three semesters of these events so far, and we have had over two hundred attendees at each one of the three events. And this is just one of the things that we're doing to get our families more involved. And Julie will tell you more, but Carla Abertar is our Marshallese liaison from the district. She works at Monitor in Bayory, and she has also been a very, very important piece in helping us to build these relationships and get more engagement. And Roxanne is one of our parents, and she is a perfect example of a parent who has gotten more involved. Roxanne serves on our school's ACIP committee, and her daughter, Roseanne Abadinas, was just elected to our School Council of Innovation as a student representative. So, I'll let Julie tell you a few more things about this night.
Okay. We put a lot of... We really tried to bring culture into this night. We did not want this to just be some hyped-up thing that we did to try to get parents in for one more thing, because we value their time, but more importantly, we value them, and we value their culture. And so, we've spent a lot of time planning things that we could do that would make this be a rich night for them as well. And so, in celebrating their culture, we incorporated... We had students learning crafts, handicrafts, and dances that are specific to the Marshall Islands. And so, we had students performing that night as well, and we had artwork hanging up, and we brought food in to celebrate. But Carla and I did a lot of behind-the-scenes work, where we were knocking on doors. We went and knocked on doors and invited our families personally, and we had a lot of very, very positive feedback from our families. The appreciation that they gave us was just... Every one of them had the same amount of appreciation that we came to their homes, and we invited them personally, because, you know, a lot of schools, we send the notes home, and sometimes they get the phone calls as well. But when you give that, you know, that in-person handshake and invite, it means so much more on a deeper level. So, we've really tried to invite them in, not just as partners in education, but as colleagues and as friends. And so, building that trust has allowed us to start opening up other doors within the school. We do not have a Toyota Family Literacy Program, but it's allowed us to begin a Marshallese Family Literacy Program of our own, just on a small amount of funding that we received last year. We got a grant for that, and then this year, we've been able to get... We received the grant a second year in a row, and we were able to start a Latino parent class. And so, because of those doors being opened, we've been able to get into the classrooms and start to share culture, you know, with our children. We see all this research that talks about authenticity, and to make learning really, truly authentic, it has to be meaningful to them. And so, we've been able to get the parents and bring them into the classrooms, and teaching their culture to our students. And so, it's been very rewarding for me personally, but I'm hoping that it's meaningful to the families, and then that word will spread, and they'll realize that Springdale loves them and cherishes them and wants success for all of their children, too.
And they said they would stand up here if we promised they didn't have to. But I wanted them here because they're really important parts of our school community.
Well, good. Well, I'm glad you shared that. And I'd forgotten that you'd spent some time in the Marshall Islands doing some of that. And I, you know, I guess, thank you for your commitment, really, to Springdale, to your school, and to these families. I mean, to bring them in to a little bit of a different place, maybe a little awkward at first and uncomfortable, and getting used to it. You know, we're certainly thankful for what you do to help them get acclimated to your school and your building, be comfortable coming in every day. You sure you don't want to say anything? You sure? Okay. All right. Well, good job.
Well, thank you for getting involved and helping these two ladies.
Yeah. Mary Bell's a great fairy godmother, too. If you haven't ever seen her on stage, she is awesome.
Board, I'd like to visit with you for just a moment about an act that was passed during the first extraordinary session. As you may recall, the state legislature called an extraordinary... Or the governor called an extraordinary session to deal primarily with the topic of public employee health insurance. As you may recall, it was in a crisis situation, to the point where the state ended up putting forty-three million dollars into the plan to help sustain it. One of the acts that came about as a result of this extraordinary session states that money sent to districts through the matrix for the purpose of health insurance will be used for that purpose and no other. Prior to that time, districts had to meet a minimum amount per month per employee that participated in the health insurance plan, and that amount was a hundred and fifty dollars. We have been at one fifty-two for some time. However, this change in the law presents a unique challenge for us. We're not sure that we'll be able to continue with the one fifty-two and meet the law, so we are studying that law. We're waiting to get some more direction. It could potentially have quite an impact on us fiscally, could cost us quite a bit of money. So, we're continuing to study that. Just wanted to bring that forward to you, because as we look forward to next year, and salary increases, if any, or benefit changes, this will definitely be something that we will be considering. So, just wanted to put that before you again. If anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to try to address those.
I think health insurance is a challenge for all of us, whether we own a business or run a school district, so... Or if you're just a family that's looking for it, it is not an inexpensive necessity anymore, so... Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kelly. Dr. Compton? Brad?
President Luttrell, members of the board, Dr. Rollins and Cynthia, we've got some good news to share with you tonight. For the last year, we have been talking with you a lot about the Partnership Program. We've submitted a master plan. That plan goes through an extensive review. It requires a funding mechanism and a specific program submission to the state. All of that has gone through very extensive review. We're happy to report that the legislature, after approval, has finally released that funding. And so that you know, there are three projects, big projects for us, that are targeted right now. Dr. Rollins mentioned to you earlier, also on our plan is an elementary school that would open in the fall of sixteen, another elementary school that would open in the fall of eighteen. Those programs have already been submitted, but we will have to wait for approval of the funding, and that will come to us in time, we believe. But right now, today, we do know that we have been funded for Tyson Elementary School for electrical upgrades, and that is to get that school ready so that we can build the next new modern media center at that school that was built in nineteen seventy-two. So, they're ready. But for us to get ready to do that work, we need to go through an electrical review inside that building. We've received a hundred and ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars from the state in partnership money to help with that project. We also have been approved for two modern media centers. Those will go at Smith Elementary and Elmdale Elementary. Those are in the amount at Smith of three hundred and thirty-five thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars, and at Elmdale, three hundred and one thousand, four hundred and six dollars. So, we are ready to go. Total, that's a pretty substantial number that's coming to us from the state, eight hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, a little on the top side of that, eight hundred and thirty-two, three twenty-seven. So, we're excited about that. We're ready to get after it and begin our work. We really enjoy working with Brad Chilcote, who's standing here with me tonight. He works with WD&amp;D and Jack, and does a lot of our design work on many, many of our projects. And he's got a few ideas here, and Brad just wants to talk a little bit about what you have in front of you. So, Brad?
I'll keep it under your thirty seconds, you said. So, what we have is two plans. One is for Smith Elementary. I believe you've seen these plans before. Smith is our prototypical media center addition. We're trying to have parity amongst the district through the schools, so it's our typical design, which we've done at Jones and at Westwood. The Elmdale Media Center is a little different, just because of the site configuration, so we've changed the design slightly. It's the same square footage. Let me amend that. It's slightly larger, just because we have to get further away from the building for building code issues, but it's going to have the same feel, slightly different look, but it'll have the same feel inside and your outside. So, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to entertain you.
You may have said this, but when will this construction begin and be completed? If I missed that, I'm sorry.
We hope to start in July, two thousand and fourteen, but the real key is to be completed for August, two thousand and fifteen, for school.
Okay.
So, and these are about nine-month jobs. And of course, we have to go through the planning for the city. We have to go through facilities review, and right now, everyone's turning in projects because they just got money, so it's going to... And we have to get in line.
We're hopeful to begin right around July one, Mike, and then continue that for, we hope, a year or so, get that done. That's the Health Center at Elmdale. That'll go on the front. We're also working on a completely different project, Randy. That Health Center will go on the southeast corner of...
same feel inside and, and you're outside. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to entertain you.
You may have said this, but when will this construction begin and be completed? If I missed that, I'm sorry.
We hope to start in July two thousand and fourteen, but the real key is to be completed for August two thousand and fifteen for school.
Okay.
So, and these are about nine-month jobs. And of course, we have to go through the planning for the city. We have to go through facilities review and right now, everyone's turning in projects because they just got money. So it's gonna, and we have to get in line.
We're hopeful to begin right around July one, Mike, and then continue that for, we hope, a year or so. Get that done. That's the health center in Elmdale. That'll go on the front. We're also working on a completely different project, Randy. That health center will go on the southeast corner of the Elmdale Building, but we're working with Dr. Rollins and Jack and Brad to, to try and redo the front of Elmdale and kind of bring that nineteen sixty-five building into a more, more modern look as well. We're not done with that yet, though. We've got some work to do.
But we're always trying to think of it campus-wide, not just little piecemeal. How can we, how does this job, like the electrical, how does this job impact future projects? So may not be able to do it all right now, but let's get done what we can and do it properly.
At TG Smith, will this interfere with our, with our outdoor learning center?
Not that center, but it does interfere a little bit, Kathy, with the playground directly to the east of the school. I'm working, in fact, I just talked to Mrs. Simko about trying to take a look at moving that a little further to the north or to the south, but we're gonna have some work there as that project goes directly behind the school. It will impact the playground.
There's no place to put it. And it doesn't, as you know.
It's a very smallish site when you go to the back of that building. So we've got some ideas. We're, we're either gonna go north or south, whatever it works for Kim and her staff.
Kim, do you have your heart hat?
Here she is.
Yeah. Well, I know you've been patient. Well, I'm glad that this day has come. I know it's taken a while to get here, but it's gonna be a great addition, I know, to your, your, your building, for sure.
We're excited about it, Mike. It's a, it's a good time for, for us and we're thankful that the state has got this kind of a project. It's really helpful to a district like us.
Absolutely.
So, good. Thank you, members of the board. Thank you, Dr. Rollins, Cynthia.
Good job. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Luttrell, we're on item K in the first section. Make, making good progress there. We have a special guest with us tonight. We actually have a member of the Springdale Leadership Class who's here. This is Sean Dorman. I'm satisfied, many of you know him, and I just took the liberty to ask him to report on the Leadership Springdale Day. I'd be very interested in, in his perspective on all that. Thank you, Sean, for being willing to do that.
Thank you. Well, obviously, I'm here for, to fulfill my, part of my obligation, you know, in one of the school board meetings, my first. It's very different from what I'm used to as part of board meetings, Warren Circle Commission. It's all business and it's refreshing, actually, you know. It was a lot of accolades and clapping and it's just, it was something else. And Dr. Rollins went with us all day long, which was surprising to me. I know you're busy, but it was quite a day. It was my favorite day, actually. Jail was closed. We got to sit in Washington County Jail.
But, you know, honestly, of course, not prepared here.
We couldn't show the fight at one of the schools, I'm sure.
No, wasn't, wasn't a fight at school. But a few words to describe it, you know, just real quick, the passion of the staff and the teachers, professionalism and really the pride, you know. Those three things really would describe what I learned that day, besides just the inner workings and, you know, everyone, how it all works. But those, those three things really, that, that summed it up for me, those three words. You know, if you got any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them.
Do you want to share with the board your perspective on the Sonora Elementary East Program? We kind of started today with that video and then we met the kids themselves later that, that afternoon. How did that, how did that affect you, Sean?
Well, it was amazing. I was impressed. I mean, they had more boys than I do right now, probably. And I, I don't, I don't know how they do that. I mean, it's gotta be, it can't all be natural, you know. That's gotta be teachers and just the atmosphere they're in. We were all amazed. That's what we talked about even after we left, you know, was that video and those kids. So to represent this community like that, that, that's amazing. That's something else. That's very commendable.
We sure enjoyed getting to know each of you and as we talked about during the day, share those stories with our community and, and let them see the work of these kids and teachers through your eyes. It was a, that's, that's what this program, to a great degree, is all about. It's a...
Yes, sir. It's a, you know, it's, it's really opened my eyes on how things work. That, the leadership program is, is really a good thing and almost done now and, and a little apprehensive when it first went into it. Not know what to expect, but glad, very glad it went through it. I hope that continues. It's, it really, it's really an eye-opener on how the community, just, not just Springdale, but Northwest Arkansas, you know, something else.
We've seen copies of the agenda, so we know how hard he worked you that day. So that's what...
Yeah, it was a full day.
Yeah, I can believe it. I can believe it. Well, we're glad you did. That is a great program. I don't remember how many years ago it was that I did it, but...
Well, nineteen.
Oh, my gosh. We did it together.
My guy, we were in the first one.
We were in the first one. That's crazy.
Nineteen years ago.
Yeah. Kathy was the valedictorian of the class, so we were proud of her.
I was the old woman in the class. And I was young back then, so.
She's still young. Well, good. Well, thanks for coming tonight. You, you should get double points for having to come and speak to us. So tell Rhonda or whoever does it to...
Tell my golf easy. Procrastinate is the last one I could take.
There you go, yeah.
Will you tell, tell your father hello for us? A great gentleman, that's for sure. Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Board, we had a pretty good afternoon ourselves. Mike, the purpose of item L is just let the board share their perspective. We covered a lot of ground this afternoon, I think.
We did. Our agenda wasn't quite as full as theirs. I'm surprised you didn't work as hard as you did that group, but open it up for the board if you have any comments or anything you want to share, just of your, of our afternoon.
I thought it was a great afternoon and I really appreciate it. This is such an exciting time for the district.
It sure is.
With a lot of new initiatives going on that I think will make a huge difference to our children and our community. And I can't thank you enough for, for your leadership with all of this.
Mr. Dodson, I said to you all day, I almost kept him in line.
You weren't listening to me?
Not, not quite.
You weren't listening to me?
I took good notes. I took good notes.
Uh, it, it is a good day and of course, starting with lunch out at Hester and I, I tell people that's the high part of serving on this board is having the weekly lunches in the school. And I promise, every time I leave one of those lunches and I get out in the parking lot and I say, I think that may be my favorite school. And it's because each one is, is a marvelous place for kids to be. And then knowing the challenges are, that are before us, often in professional business, you get a challenge, well, somebody that's involved in it, first thing they do, they sit down and they write an alibi report. You know, this is why it's that way. Live with it. But as we come into things in Springdale School Board, Schools, we don't get an alibi report. We get a plan to fix it. And today, we touched a little bit on a couple of new plans, Race to the Top and then also I-School. And I'm gonna light candles every night for the guys involved in that, that I-School. That's, I mean, it's gonna be like birthing a child. So thanks, guys.
Board, I know we also just returned from the National School Board Association meeting and I, from my point of view, that was one of the better agendas that I remember having. So your perspective on that and how, how does that help us grow and get better?
Randy, Michelle, both of you, too.
We had two excellent keynote speakers. One of them was Magic Johnson. I'm sure most of y'all have heard of him. I, you know, obviously, I watched him play. That was when I was, you know, in school and, and he was one of my heroes and I always saw him as a basketball player. That son of a gun knows how to talk. He knows how to motivate people. He's a very successful businessman. And somehow or another, the National School Board Association got him on board to kind of help promote Common Core and, and all the education initiatives that are coming down the pike. And he's gonna have a big influence in, not only the African-American community, but just in, in all communities because he's, he's a phenomenal speaker. And then Sir...
Ken Robinson.
Ken Robinson was, was excellent from Great Britain, you know, kind of dry sense of humor, but a fabulous speaker. Talked about, probably didn't talk about as much education as Magic did, but he was still a really good speaker to listen to. So if you guys didn't get to go to the, to the conference, you, you missed out on those two for sure.
Hi, Matt.
Yeah.
I liked going to the, each of the workshops and it was probably the neatest thing for me since it was my, obviously, my first time, was just to realize how forward-thinking Springdale Schools are and that, how in each conference, you know, they would be talking about something that we should try doing. And I was like, well, we're doing that and we're already doing that. And, you know, and being able to chat to board members from all over the country and they would ask, I mean, when we stood in line to go in to see Magic Johnson, the different people around us, you know, were talking about, and I'm like, we do that and it works great. And, you know, and different, different things. And I think that was just, you know, to take pride in, in our district and where we're at and where we're going.
I'll bet you, you know, I was looking through some of my notes and there were two things that I remember, two quotes. One of them was from Magic Johnson. He said, "Just because you're poor doesn't mean you have to have poor dreams." And I thought about it, you know, Pete, you know, all the kids that might be considered poor that are at your school, you know, they don't have to have poor dreams. When you hear him talk about being raised in Lansing, Michigan and, and, you know, six sisters and three brothers, I mean, and, you know, to hear him tell that story. The other thing was when, when Thomas Friedman was talking, he said, "Average is dead." Man, if we could all take that with whatever we're doing, whether as parents or teachers or principals or school board members or insurance agents, you know, average is dead. I mean, we need to certainly continue to pursue great things. So fortunately, I think we're surrounded by a bunch of people in this room that do that.
Thank you, board. It was, it was a privilege to be here.
Thanks for the opportunity. I think it, I mean, we learn a lot and I think we get a lot out of that. You know, and it's a, it's a struggle to get there with everybody's schedules as busy, busy as they are, but I appreciate you giving us that opportunity to go learn because we need professional development and, and not just for the hours to satisfy the state, but just to, to stay motivated and educated in our roles doing what we do.
Thank you all. Okay. You, we've been here a while. Do you want to stretch? Take a break?
We'll take about a seven-minute break here.
All right, you're more generous than Jesus.
That's true.
What was our turn number?
Maybe seven minutes, two.
Oh, goodness. Been a, been a good day.
Did you go this year, Dee Dee? I did. Sit out here, bud.
Give that Mike the memories.
That's awesome.
That's awesome. That's making memories. Hello, Eric. How you doing, fellow?
I don't say anything. It's just crazy.
Jerry, you're on my, 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 you're a, 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 in my opinion, it would be terrible.
And the reason why, I mean, because I go, we're gonna take the kids with one of this, well, the school doesn't take them, but there's a group, teachers at Central, like, they're going to Italy next year. We're taking all of us, all, all three kids. And I'm like, I'm not missing that. Um, so I'm trying to.
No, I, I'm not, no, I'm just, I'm just, I don't want to.
I don't know that I want to go, where is? I almost had him turn off the, the mic so I wouldn't, okay, when is? Yep. The weekend before. It is, it's the twen-, because it's like the twenty, twentieth, twenty-first, twenty-second and twenty-third. I don't know if they think, but I mean, all of the, I mean, a lot of people have kids. I don't, I don't. I don't know. That month, except for some go into the next month, but I think Louisiana takes it for Easter that week.
Goodness gracious.
It's next year. Can you make this up?
Huh? It's Nashville.
It is during spring break, by the way.
It is.
It's the weekend, you know, the twenty and twenty-fourth, it's the weekend that the first part is spring break.
No kidding. Huh. That could be a little tricky.
It's that way for the next two, I mean, we're looking for, so, I mean, how, I mean, not now for next year, we'll be, we're going to the trash can.
A long seven minutes.
Hey, I tell you what, dude, when you got the gavel.
He's got, he's got Dan Leppard's chair.
Text, just go ahead and text him and say anything.
I said tomorrow.
Wouldn't go back. They're all right. Let's be pretty brief.
That is kind of nice. All right.
Pete, how are you?
Thank you.
Okay. Hello. Oops. Hello.
I've got my gavel.
I have two items in terms of an update on Race to the Top, which does not include the handout that I gave you. That's just for your information based on earlier today.
Thank you.
The financial update, again, we want to make sure with full transparency that everyone knows how our expenditures are going and we have, on page eighty, at least on my account, uh, it's page eighty, we have just received today permission to go ahead and spend the 1.5 and the one, for the rest of our computers that we wanted to get in this spring. So that's good news on that, so that, that technology bid that's been on hold can now be released. We have some outstanding bills that have not been processed through yet, the 2.1, because you'll see in the end, the checks we've written thus far are about 353,000. We've asked for reimbursements up to 350,000 and we ask for those reimbursements monthly according to the business office. So we're not spending wildly, we're spending small, small-paced. You can see on page eighty-one the kinds of expenditures we're making and just to be reminded, the project numbers are in that, at the top, it says project number and there's a little small number that tells you the, the project updates. There are things happening in every project and I'm just really, I'm very proud of the fact that there are so many plates spinning in the air, but the folks that are leading the work at the building and district level, Kathy and Kim and Clay, Kimberly Gare Glass as well, Mary Bridgeforth, they're all doing some magnificent work to bring the projects forward in steady but careful processing. So with that, unless there are other questions, that concludes my presentation.
She's good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jones.
We know you're working hard.
Thank you, Ken.
The two things that I wanted to bring to your attention tonight have to do with the PLC Institute. This summer, we will have a PLC Hybrid Institute and what that means is that we will link in live to the Orlando, Florida Institute. We are using part of our Race to the Top money to support 160 staff members from Springdale Schools and then we have used some NSLA money to purchase another approximately 50 seats. And so those people will be able to hear the Defores, Rick Defore, all of those great leaders with PLC and really build the excitement and the learning within our district. And then at the end of that institute, that's two and a half days, the final three hours is a time when, it's called team time, and so we have a facilitator from Solution Tree, that's the company that puts on the PLC Institute, and he will work with all of our schools in just planning those next steps. We've just heard this great knowledge, now what are we going to do with it? How are we going to take it back into our buildings and so forth? We also have opened this up to other districts. The co-op started advertising this today and we're only going to sell about 50 seats because we want to keep this hybrid conference small, but we will open it up to other districts so that, again, they also do not have to travel long distances this summer. The next PLC Institute then is the summer of 2015 and we are not part of that in terms of planning it. This is just Solution Tree. Each year, they look around in the country, where are PLCs really growing, where can they be supported? And so Northwest Arkansas was approached, they came and did a site visit and looked at several places here and decided that they liked Harbor High School best and so they have asked to use Harbor High School in return for that. We will get a discount on seats and so we're pretty pleased with that. Again, we have Race to the Top money to continue to support our teachers in building and district leaders in building their knowledge of the PLC process and so in the summer of 2015, then we will also have teachers be able to attend that institute because it will be so close and easy. Again, we're not having to pay travel, hotel, meals, any of those things, so we'll be able to use our money very wisely in both situations. But that will be a, that will not be our institute, it will be just the Solution Tree regular PLC Institute. So you'll see that advertised and we'll have people from all over the country who will be traveling here for that institute. We'll just also be sending people.
How many people will attend that?
Right now, with Harbor, I believe we're at 1,100 in the performing.
In the PAC?
Yes. Yes. They, when they were here, they went ahead and looked at Springdale High School and they said if the numbers get too high and they have a real strong interest, then they may come back to us and talk to us about moving it over to Springdale so that they could have more participants. But typically, they, these institutes run somewhere between 1,100 and 1,700 people.
So is our goal to have every teacher in Springdale go through this institute?
I, I really don't think so. I think we're just trying to build a critical mass of understanding and we can do that by just making sure that we have representatives from each of our schools. Any other questions?
I don't think so. You know, when you look at it, I guess what's on page eighty-five for the 2014 Institute, $345 per person as opposed to if you were having to travel to Orlando, you'd be able to send.
The regular institute itself is over $600 and then you add your airfare and you add, you know, meals and, and everything, so yes, we felt like this was a very good way to train more people.
I appreciate you looking at it that way. It's always nice to be there, I know, but, I mean, I think this will still be an effective way for our teachers to participate, it looks like.
Thank you.
Board, I want to just review with you a couple of the items. We went over about the I-School this afternoon. Mr. Rollins did want to be here, but he's at Sonora Middle School doing another parent meeting tonight. We looked today at the brochure and the videos and the website and those translated examples of those. I talked to you about the parent meetings on the 10th and the 14th and the attendance at those. The application, we looked at that, it's open through May 15th. I looked again and we now have 81 applicants, so people, students continue to apply. We've had about 20 apply just today. The teacher positions are posted, we're screening those and beginning to schedule interviews. We have some major curriculum work for the curriculum of the I-School on May 1st and 2nd with some experts coming in to help us with that. We're looking, still looking, working with Nwac to be our higher ed partner and working with them on the degree and credential plans for the I-School. So there's a lot of work that's been done in the last month. I-School is, is the biggest part of what I do every day and that will continue until we're satisfied the school is, is off to a great start. Certainly, it's, it's very fun work. I want to take a, I want to shift just a second to this resolution. You have a copy of a resolution that I shared with you earlier today. It's the resolution for you to approve, or to, I'm sorry, to support these schools becoming schools of innovation. This is, this is a list here, if you check it, you will find it is a list of all of our middle schools and elementary schools. Last month, we had a similar resolution that had the high schools and the junior high schools, so this will now effectively make all of our schools a school, schools of innovation and make us a district of innovation, so.
Board, I think you'll recall Clay providing this to us earlier in our meeting and if you've, if you got it or if not, I can give you my copy. If there's any questions, you can direct those to Clay and if not, we'll accept a motion to accept this resolution.
Salute.
Motion by Mr. Hutchinson.
Second.
Second by Ms. McFetridge. Any other discussion? There being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? There is none, so the resolution passes, so.
Thank you so much for your support. Also have with me tonight, Mr. Bobby Cole, who's our district, district testing coordinator and he's going to give you some updates on the testing season, some of the testing that we've gone through and some that is still to come.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I like the, the way it says testing season. Dr. Rollins asked me at a meeting the other day and I, I think all year is testing season, believe it or not. Real quick, I think you've got an attachment here for the rest of the school year for April and May and it just kind of gives you a color-coordinated guide, guide of what kind of park test or park testing and what kind of end-of-course testing is going on for the rest of the year. As you can see, every day is full. Just kind of an update for the, for April. You see, we just completed, well, we're about to complete the open window for the performance-based assessment for the park test. We've had all of our schools that are involved, which were 24 schools that are involved in that park testing. All of those have, to my knowledge, today have completed the online and the paper testing that they were assigned to do. We do still have approximately 10 schools, they're, that are going, I'm sorry, about five schools that are going to be functioning on the end-of-course exam, which will be opened up in May and you can see that on your testing window in May. Then, of course, today, we were, we've been, I've been having boxing fun today. We're in the process of, you know what, and I'm going to say this, i- if you see, go to, out to the buildings and you see the assistant principals, every building, there's an assistant principal that's actually assigned as the testing coordinator for that school and I'm going to tell you, they work hard. They really have to work hard. I mean, number one, people say, well, how in the world can I handle testing for 20, over 20,000 kids? But, you know, all I can do is train those, those assistant principals and they have to actually put them out there, pick them up, bring them to me and with a little bit of stress, of course, from the state, have to make sure everything gets back in the way it's supposed to and we're doing, they're, they're doing a great job. So I do want to say, if you get out there and you happen to talk to an assistant principal, ask them, who's the assessment coordinator? And give them a hug, they need a hug. We had some good celebrations today because benchmarks are coming back in, so if you get an opportunity to come over to the PDC, right now, there's only about, oh, probably 400 boxes, but by Friday, I'll have somewhere in the neighborhood of 600 boxes in that big room that you see in order to ship out, hopefully by Friday or Monday, because I know there's a meeting coming up on Tuesday or so that I'm trying, I'm trying to get that out before they can have that meeting, so I've got to clear that room out of there, so. We've got benchmark that is coming in. Right now, we've also got geometry, biology and algebra that's going out, so I'm moving boxes in and out of, of my rooms right now, trying to get all those kids ready and at the same time, I'm trying to provide some assistance getting ready for the AP exams which are coming up and also, of course, for those IB exams and, of course, those career and tech exams that are coming up also. So we have exams coming up all over the place. Biggest thing is just trying to Uh, the biggest thing is just trying to coordinate everything and make sure everybody takes place. And on top of that, which is not on this calendar, we're also piloting the, um, portfolio, online portfolio test, which is, they call it the NENSIC. Uh, that's coming up here, uh, at the end of this month, on the 1st of May. And because our portfolio kids, you know, they start portfolios from the beginning of the school year and go all the way till, well, till March, spring break. Uh, as it is now, there'll be a window of time open to test those special ed kids, and they'll have to sit in front of a computer screen and test them that way. So we're, we're piloting that, uh, to see how that's going to function too. And that's my report, unless you have any questions.
You seem way too calm right now. I know how I feel, like.
Yeah, well, you know, if you get too stressed, that, that also shares off with the other people. Uh, so when they call me, I, I'm trying to be the calm in the storm. Ah, we can have, you know what, we can handle it, and really, no matter what happens when testing's going on, if there's some problems going on, if something happens, it's nothing that cannot be fixed. It's, it's no problems at all. So, we just, we, I get out there, that's one good thing with, with Eric and technology. We, we get out there and, and we've got, I've got, there's a lot of people that are, that can go to to get help. So if I can't help them, I find somebody that can.
Bobby, thank you so much. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Why you get at work, Jenny West? Hey, son, how you doing?
Good evening, board, how are you all? Provided you, um, a calendar for the 2014, 2015 school year proposed calendar that was voted on by the, the entire staff, certified and classified. You'll see an example of the ballot on the second page, behind the calendar, and on the third page, the Springdale School District 14, 15 calendar results from the vote. The PPC, both certified and, and classified, uh, this is their vote, this, and I provided you the way that they presented the votes, uh, to me today, and by numbers, the results of the vote. There are two options on the ballots, you can see, uh, draft A, same as 2013, 14 school year and previous years. The last day of school will be May 26th, barring any inclement weather days. And three, designate all teacher classroom planning workdays for August 12th. And essentially, draft B is the same, except it's designate all teacher classroom planning workday as August 15th. So those were the choices. The results were, um, by number, as far as number of votes, 525 votes for option A, 754 votes for option B. By location, the number of the buildings, 14 buildings voted for, uh, option A, and 16 buildings voted for option B. So the result is, for presentation to you, designate, uh, all teacher classroom planning day as August 15th. Now, does that change the calendar? No. The calendar itself is the same, they just voted on which day would be the planning work session for the teachers. Yes, sir? I guess they really wanted option B. That's all I could, I could tell, my secretary pulled these together. Mm-hmm, and Central showed 99%. Yeah, so I just tallied the number of, of votes for you. So, anyway, they can present however they want it to, so, yeah. Anyway, so I would, uh, respectfully request that you consider the 2014, 15 school calendar as presented, Dr. Rollins.
And just to be clear, which option are we recommending? Is it?
It's, uh, option B, but the calendar itself wouldn't change. It's just a designated day for the planning and workday.
Well, I know we've had a, uh, challenging year this year with very unusual weather. Perhaps that's the reason. This, this vote seems a little closer than I remember in past years. Do you, is it, do you think it's an extension of all we've just been through, or?
Well, honestly, I don't believe the vote had anything to do with the calendar itself. I think the vote had to do with which day was going to be designated in the buildings as the planning day.
So that really is the.
Mm-hmm. And the elementary.
Teachers were focused on.
Yes, sir. And the elementary and middle would like earlier in the week, and secondary folks would like later in the week. So, that's the way the PP chose, our PPC chose to do that. But, uh, they really did an excellent job, Dr. Rollins and board, in trying to really work over the calendar to see if there were any things that we could do differently, better. And quite honestly, the work that's been done in the past with PPC and Mr. Jones and Dr. Rollins and, and the entire team, the calendar is really, really good for a huge district, and we are a large district. And so it works well for everyone.
Thank you, Jared, for bringing the phone.
You didn't have, you didn't have a draft that had 16 snow days built into it?
No. Dr. Rollins asked me about that, he said, should we have some more? I might just tell this, you don't care. He said, what about seven? What about some more? Well, we have policy that, that, uh, really is good for us, and other districts are, are following our policy about how to try to incorporate some of those, those missed snow days. But the law says five, we have five, we have a way to recoup some of those days that are over five, and then at the end of that, as we know, they all go to the end of the school year.
Okay, board, any questions for Dr.?
We accept, uh, option B as presented by Dr. Cleveland.
Okay, we have a motion to accept option B, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Ms. Cook. Any other questions or discussion?
Are we going to just option B?
Just the calendar.
Or the calendar as?
The calendar as presented.
Okay, calendar as presented.
Which would be option B.
Okay, got you.
Any other questions? All right, if not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? There being none, the motion passes to accept option B. All right.
Thank you, sir.
Glad we don't get to print an agenda.
The second portion of my presentation tonight would be to present, uh, for the board approval, the list of current employees who are recommended for contract renewal for the 14, 15 school year, which was in your packet. There's an entire list of those employees, and to ask the board to grant permission for the superintendent to hire additional personnel as needed for the 14, 15 school year, as has been customary.
You'll see that list on pages 94 through 133. And this is the, the practice we've done in the past, board, so, uh, take a motion.
To, uh, to do that.
To, uh, extend the contracts and to give, uh, Dr. Rollins permission to hire folks as he sees fit.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Hutchinson, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. McFetridge. Any other questions or discussion on that? All right, there being none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? There's none, so motion carries.
There's one aspect of the, the, uh, of that approval that I'd like to, to talk to you about just briefly. There will be some additional resignations, we, that's something that we, we found over time. This list that was presented to you tonight is what we know at this time. So, anyway, I just wanted to make clarification. At this point, we have 18 retirees certified, and overall, 32 certified resignations, resignations, which includes those 18 retirees, just as an update. All right, thank you, board.
Board, I have three items for you this evening. The first item is the monthly building projects report update. You can see I have two projects on there this month, the, uh, tennis, uh, complex at Harbor, as well as Harbor Stadium. Um, we are still awaiting final payout on the tennis complex, and then we are just beginning work on the Harbor Stadium, so you will be seeing that then for the, uh, next few months. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have on that.
Now, you can't answer a question about the tennis complex itself, are they about to get that wrapped up?
They called me today, wanted me to come up and take a look at it.
Okay.
We're not coming up with Brad and Jack, we're not quite ready to walk there and kind of do a final inspection, but we're getting very close, very close.
It really looks good. I mean, I know you've had some issues, but.
You're all expecting it correctly.
Okay, thank you.
Are we right on budget with the tennis court? We're going to have a little money left over? Where are we at on that?
Um, I think it's going to be close, but, uh, pretty good shake. If there are no other questions on that, the next item that I have for you, board, is an incoming transfer request. We have a student who has been attending Springdale, but, um, as happens from time to time, we've discovered that their residence is actually located in the Huntsville School District. Huntsville has released that child to continue to attend Springdale, and we would recommend that this, uh, that the board accept this student officially into our district.
I move that we accept this incoming transfer.
Motion by Ms. McFetridge, a second by Mr. Owenby. Any questions on this one? There being none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? There is none, so motion carries.
The final item I have for you this evening is the March, uh, financial statements. As I referred to, uh, spoke with you earlier in the day at the work session, I continue to watch the revenue closely. Um, as I alluded to earlier today, the tax bills did go out a little later this year than they did previously, and so that is having an effect on our revenue when it's coming in. I'm hoping it'll just be a timing issue, and that it'll all work itself out within another month or so. Other than that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
As you look at your crystal ball, which I know is always fun, in your role for April, May, and June, uh, the last three mi- our fiscal year, is it July 1st, is that, am I right on?
It is.
Okay. Those last three months, as you look at expenditures for the last three months, you think you're going to be at 100% of your budget? Are you going to, what do you think?
On, on expenditures?
Yeah.
I think that we'll be slightly below 100%. Um, it, not much, but it's, it is going to be pretty tight, um, compared to budget, but I do think we will be below 100%. Certainly do. Probably in the range of 98, 98 and a half, something like that.
Other questions, Kelly, on the financial report?
I move we accept the, uh, financial report as presented.
Have a motion by Mr. Dodson to accept the report, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Cook. Any other questions before we let him go here? All right, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And oppose? There being none, motion carries.
I come bearing gifts.
Oh, there you go.
Um, my mom's always said, whenever you're giving people bad news, bring them a present, and it'll be okay. Your bad news is that you're going to be stuck with me again next year.
Oh.
That's no bad news.
We really don't have a lot going on, but we did get new shirts made this year, so, um, I have one for all the school board members and all the administrators.
Thank you.
Did they double your pay?
Ooh, I like this. I nearly did.
That's pretty.
Yes.
Thank you so much. I got you a triple X. Well, thank you. That's it? Okay, making it easy on us tonight, all right. I know Mr. Dodson would be disappointed if we didn't ask for any committee reports before we left, but.
I have enough, my committee hasn't met.
Okay, I think, uh, we are adjourned. Thank you, board, for your time today. And administrators, we appreciate y'all's time, too.